Set for 6:00 PM.
Should turn on the microphone. Good evening. Let's call to order the Special Planning Commission meeting study session of July 14th, 2025 at 6:00 PM. The city does not tolerate disruptive behavior in our meetings. This planning commission meeting is considered a limited public forum, which means the commission can regulate the time, place, and manner of speech. Speaker comments must be limited to the agenda item being considered by the commission. If a speaker's comments are not related to an agenda item, the presiding officer will rule the speaker out of order. The speaker will not be ruled out of order because of a disagreement with the content of their speech. Location and meeting details are available on the planning commission agenda. Scan the on-screen QR code or click the language access and translation link on the meeting agenda to read and listen along in more than 50 different languages. Use the show captions button to view captions on Zoom. Following this study session, the regular planning commission meeting will begin at 7:00 PM. We encourage the public to stay tuned and participate in the regular meeting. Recording officer, may we please have the roll call?
Commissioner Pine.
Present.
Commissioner Shukla.
Present.
Commissioner Segura.
Present.
Commissioner Fagona.
Present.
Chair Iglesias.
Present.
Vice Chair Davis.
Present.
We have six commissioners present and Commissioner Seroni's absences excused.
Okay. Today's study session is 25-0701. This is a... To allow site and architectural modifications to a previously approved special development permit, file number 2020-7620, for an existing affordable housing development, which consisted of demolition of one apartment building with 32 apartment units, construction of a new six-story, 93-unit building, and rehabilitation of an existing apartment building with 30 affordable apartment units. The project was approved by the planning commission on November 8th, 2021, with a state density bonus which included four concessions and three waivers from development standards. Staff is requesting to allow the minor modifications to be approved by the Director of Community Development. Okay, is there a staff report?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Honorable Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the planning commission. My name is Cindy Haum, Associate Planner, and presenting this item to you this evening. The application before you is a miscellaneous plan permit to allow for various site and building modifications to a previously approved 100% affordable housing project located at 245 Waddell Drive. The project went on hold for two years due to losing a critical piece of funding. Since then, the Santa Clara County Housing Authority has taken over the management from First Community, who was the original applicant. The planning commission approved this project back in November 2021. The project consists of 123 affordable units. The project description includes demolition of 30 units, renovation of 32 units, and construction of 93 new units in a new six-story building. It also included various site improvements. The project was approved with the density bonus with multiple concessions and waivers. The modifications are being prompted by a 10% to 15% cost reduction that is needed to make the project feasible. As site orientation, the project is located in the area that's bounded in bread. The site area is approximately 1.72 acres. The zoning for this piece of property is R4 with the planned development combining district. The surrounding uses includes a hotel to the west, Waddell Drive and Highway 101 to the south, multifamily apartment buildings to the east, and then to the north is the John Christensen Greenbelt. As mentioned, one of the concessions was for reduced usable open space. With the project modifications, they are proposing to remove the balcony elements as a cost-saving measure. As a result, the approved usable open space was 178 per square feet, and it's going down to 168 square feet per unit. Staff is still supportive of this concession, considering that the project still provides a significant gain in affordable housing. The project also meets all the required landscaping. The project also includes active community spaces. There is a community garden on the roof deck. There's also a courtyard and community room with kitchen facility. These are all provided within the building and allows for opportunities for recreation and social interaction. Furthermore, the Orchard Garden Park and John Christensen Greenbelt is immediately behind the project site, and this is also one and a half miles away from the Seven Seas Public Park. In the next couple of sites, I'll just go over the proposed modifications. Starting with the ground level, there is an existing transformer that's located in front of the Parkview Apartments. Originally, it was to be undergrounded, but due to site constraints and just construction phasing, without causing any disruption to those residents, it's being requested to remain above ground. The applicant is screening this transformer. Additionally, they are going to be relocating bike facilities from this location to be located underneath the podium stairs. At the second level, they are making modifications to the courtyard, and it's really just a reorientation of the site furnishings. Additionally, they are going to be relocating the community room, which was previously located on the east side of the building, now to the south of that courtyard. At the roof level, they are removing the roof-mounted centralized HVA system and substituting with wall-mounted individual packaged terminal heat pumps, or PTACs for short. They're also removing the steel trellis over the community garden. And then also, as a result of these changes, there is a one-foot increase in the building height. Based on the state density bonus laws, it's still within the allowable heights under those provisions. In terms of exterior modifications, they are removing all balconies. They're also removing the screen wall, the southern facades, and along the interior courtyard. They are also replacing windows, window walls at the corridor ends with individual punch window openings. They're also removing exterior stairs on the east side of the building that are not required for egress, and then also, lastly, the material cladding changes on the facades. In the next couple of sites, we'll show the elevations with the proposed changes. On the right, or sorry, the left side is the approved elevation, and on the... Sorry, left is approved and right is proposed. And as you can see, they're removing the balconies and also the rain screen sets around those three vertical elements. And then they're basically proposing a different wall cladding to help still provide that articulation and movement to the building. On the east side of the building, there is a change with, again, removal of balconies and that steel trellis over the community garden deck. Moving on with the west elevation, again, there's the window changes at the corners of the building, and then also the removal of that rain screen decorative element that's in the center of the courtyard. What they do propose to do is there's an arc mural that's on the ground level. They plan to extend that on the upper levels to maintain that articulation. Just go to the rear elevation. The notable change here is the elevator overrun. Originally, it was at 83 feet, and now it's being reduced down to 73 feet and 5 inches. But again, there's the material change and the removal of the balcony elements. And this is interior courtyard rendering showing the proposed on the left... Or sorry, approved on the left and proposed on the right. So in staff's perspective, it is still maintaining kind of the original design intent. And again, this is just a rendering of the approach. And this is a rendering of the front facade. So again, with the changes, it does maintain some good materiality. It also emphasizes that corner. The roof design is also carried throughout the building. There are extended eaves that give it a nice shadow line. So, lastly, staff would like for the planning commission to provide feedback and direction to work with the applicant to allow for these minor modifications to be approved by the community development director.
That's the end of the staff report?
That isn't. Sorry.
I don't want to cut you off short. All right, so moving on, is there an applicant report?
Yes. One moment, we're just pulling that up. Wonderful. Can you hear me all right? Okay, great. Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners. Thank you for having us tonight. We're very excited to be bringing this project back to life in this phase. And so if we can go to the next slide. Our short agenda for our brief presentation is just to introduce the Santa Clara County Housing Authority, talk through the project key benefits, talk through the feasibility and need for making changes at this point in time, and then how we're proposing to maintain the high-quality design of the project. I'm Sarah Vaccaro, in principle with Architects Fora. We've been on the project since 2016, I believe. So we were before the commissioners back in 2021 as well.
Yeah, good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Serena Lee. I am the Development Manager at the Housing Authority, Santa Clara County Housing Authority. Okay, so this is just a kind of a quick summary of the Housing Authority. We are Santa Clara County Housing Authority, and we currently serve 44,000 residents throughout Santa Clara County. We focus on enriching and strengthening our communities. Being a moving-to-work agency, we have more flexibility on providing housing vouchers and focusing on real estate efforts such as orchard gardens to preserve and building new homes for communities like Sunnyvale. Last year in the fall, the Housing Authority started assisting First Community Housing's operation and development projects, and Orchard Garden is one of the few that we're assisting with. Let me go to the next slide. In an effort to bring more affordable homes to Sunnyvale, this project will be rehabbing 30 units and adding and replacing 93 new homes. Will be serving families from 30% to 60% AMI. 31 homes will be dedicated for permanent support of housing, and 90 homes for family and with two managers' units on site. Some of the project amenities will include like outdoor spaces such as community gardens and play area for kids, indoor spaces like community rooms, the computer labs within the building. The building will also have resident service programs that will serve the families on site. Next slide to... That's wood. So this feasibility tab. In order to bring state resources, resources such as tax credit funding to the project, we have explored different options to ensure competitiveness of the funding application. So that includes like finding ways to, one, like maintain the quality of the project while balancing the efficiency of the construction costs. This led to some design changes, as what Cindy was sharing with us earlier, and will require some updates on entitlement approvals with the City of Sunnyvale. And I'm going to pass on to Sarah to kind of walk us through. Thank you.
Next slide, please. So as we mentioned, we believe the design still holds a commitment to high-quality design and a large benefit to the residents and future residents of this site. As shown in the diagram on the left, sorry. The color-coded spaces are all of our outdoor spaces that are linked really nicely with exterior and interior vertical circulation, ground-level spaces for children to play, podium court yard spaces outside of the community room, and then a rooftop garden that'll provide views to the surrounding Sunnyvale neighborhood. Next slide, please. So we're just going to click through the initial street view rendering, and then if we click to the next slide, we've overlaid a handful of annotations kind of showing how the high-quality design has been maintained. So as Cindy noted, we're maintaining the iconic butterfly roof form with dramatic overhangs at the sixth floor level. We're also keeping that strong corner design feature and wrapping both the terracotta paneling material, terracotta-colored paneling material, as well as the horizontal lap siding in that darker charcoal shade. In addition, where some of the screens that were in the prior design were removed due to the balconies being removed, we've in place provided a warm wood-colored horizontal lap siding material that provides, again, texture and warmth, but also a vertical gesture along this southern-facing facade that'll be very visible from Highway 101. Next slide. This is the east elevation, so fronting our existing multifamily neighbor next door. And next slide, please. And with the annotations. So we've maintained large, beautiful windows in our units to provide lots of natural daylight to our residents. The second-floor podium courtyard... I'm sorry, let me back up. There's three separate buildings that sit on top of the podium courtyard, and so from the east side, you can see the breaks between those buildings that lead to our courtyard, a space beyond. We are reducing the size of the rooftop canopy over the community garden on the sixth floor, but still maintaining a roof element there that links together the larger two buildings on the right and left of this facade. We're maintaining a range of materials and textures to create visual interest across the building facades, as well as a common language on each of the different directions of the building. Next slide. On the north elevation, as Cindy noted, we had to remove the balconies here as well, but we're still maintaining kind of a rhythm of materiality from the wood-like toned material on the left, using the dark recesses to create some visual contrast and setbacks, and then within the field of the terracotta color paneling inlaying some dark features that allude to a horizontal banding that was in the design previously. Next slide, please. And there are those annotations. Just a note, we did remove... There was a rooftop mechanical screen on this northern building. We were able to remove that because we were able to remove the rooftop equipment that it was shielding. So there's a rooftop equipment screen on the first building, A, the southernmost building, and that's what you're seeing in the background of this elevation. And then finally, our courtyard rendering. So this is a really important design feature from the beginning of the project. We are rehabilitating 30 units on site in the existing Parkview buildings, and we want those to feel very connected and intertwined with the new 93-unit building. So we are removing a carport that's attached to one of the existing buildings to create this lovely protected pedestrian connection between the existing buildings and outdoor space and the new building and its courtyard space above. And so the trellis and pedestrian pathway on the left of this image showcase that strong connection. Next slide, awesome. And then, yeah, Cindy noted before, we're using murals to guide residents through the spaces from the existing buildings up the stair to the podium courtyard, and then up the building in the middle to the roof deck above. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. So now I ask for questions from my colleagues. And I see Commissioner Segura's hand up first.
Thank you. So I have a few questions. Since you guys said that you're moving the air conditioner from the roof, where are all the condensers are going to be mounted?
That's a great question. So we're using packaged air terminal heat pumps. They're a box essentially that lives inside of the unit, attached to the wall, and there's a through penetration through the wall with a louver grill on the exterior. I'm not sure how visible it was in the renderings, but in the elevations in your drawing package, you'll be able to see those louvers.
Which means that the condenser will sit on each level, and if somebody needs to repair it later on...
Correct, yes.
They would need cranes or lift or whatever.
It's... They'll need to access the unit within the... I'm sorry, the packaged terminal within the unit, the residential unit, and repair it that way, but it's hung on the wall, so it can be removed and replaced or repaired as needed.
So it's like a one unit?
Correct.
I see.
Correct.
Okay. My next question is for your lap siding. What material are you going to use?
Great question. Do we have the drawing package by chance?
I'm sorry if I'm giving you half time. I'm a general contractor.
No, I appreciate it. I just want to have a visual to go with it. So for the terracotta-colored material, the dark charcoal-colored material and the wood-like kind of mid-tone material, we're proposing a fiber cement panel product that comes in a variety of different sizes. So the terracotta will be a larger panel size. The darker charcoal color will be tighter lap siding, horizontal lap siding. And then the honey-colored wood tone is a tongue-in-groove lap siding of that same fiber cement product.
That's fine. The transformer, I want to address that. Originally, my understanding, I was not a commissioner at the time, but it was supposed to be in the ground, and now it's going to be above ground. Is that right?
So there are three transformers going in on this project. One to support the existing Parkview Apartments, and two to support the new building. PG&E no longer allows in-ground vaulted transformers, and that was the case three years ago when we were working on the project in earnest at that time. And so all three are above ground. We worked very closely with staff and the commissioners to create a nice screening element so that none are visible from the street, but they can meet PG&E.
Kids will not have access.
Correct, correct.
Okay, great. Out of curiosity, why are you guys moving so many balconies out of the project? Except cost, obviously.
Yeah, so as you guys may know, like this project went on a pause for a minute, and partially is because of a funding issue. And in an effort to pull in some state funding, which is tax credit, we need to make sure the cost of the building is as efficient as possible. And some of these elements, like the balconies, that would be a bit more costly are looking to be eliminated, unfortunately. But we're trying to maintain like the high quality of the building and... Yeah, so that's why we're having this presentation.
Very good. Okay, I'm almost done. My understanding is that the building is going to be about a full fire. I don't see any potential issues with noise because it's close to the freeway, right? So there is going to be any impact as far as noise? Because the higher you go, you know, noise normally travel up. So did you guys conduct any studies regarding that?
That's a great point, yes. We are right along the highway, so there is a lot of noise at this site. In the prior design, where we did have balconies facing the highway, we went through great lengths to design those screens to be acoustically sound, to make those balconies usable. So one of the big cost-saving measures, as Serena just noted, with removing the balconies, we were able to remove those screens as well. And that's not to make the acoustic treatment any less on this building. The exterior walls of the building are very robust acoustical-rated assemblies. So on the southern facade, we have the exterior cladding. We have an insulated wall cavity, and then we have two layers of JIP board on the inside with resilient channels, all to create a very robust acoustic treatment. The windows wall have a very high STC, all to the point of making these units very comfortable acoustically. In addition, we've masked the building to put that central courtyard and rooftop garden space internal to the site so that the southern building actually blocks a lot of the acoustic noise from the highway, making those exterior spaces quite lovely.
So my last question, pretty much you kind of touched it, but the window is going to be with noise reduction with different sizes glass in order to reduce the noise from the freeway, at least on that side.
Precisely, yeah. And it's most robust on the southern side facing the highway, and it tapers off on the east and west facades.
Okay, no more questions for me. Thank you.
Commissioner Shukla.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Thank you for the presentation. And I have a question. It's like, it probably got perverted. It's the link between the old buildings and the new buildings where you are removing the carport. I was on the site today, and I saw the storage spaces. It's like the midway, it's about the car. Are you guys going to remove them too? Because I saw family was storing stuff there. So just was curious that you are not taking away the function of those existing homes?
That's a great point, and I know that storage is a really important component of Sydney Sunnyvale's municipal code. I think the requirement is 300 cubic feet per unit, which we are complying with on this project. To your point about replacing the existing storage that will be removed as a part of that carport retrofit to become a pedestrian walkway, we have ground-floor residential storage units in the new building, and it'll be a part of the property management team's job of kind of deciphering how those get reassigned to units that may be losing storage in that retrofit portion.
That's great. So, yeah, because I just see that everybody is having that issue. That's, that's great. So, yeah, because I, I just see them, everybody is having that issue. So that, that is great that you are doing it. And also the question I had, the, the, the next housing unit on your southeast side. So now, before you had a connection, visual connection, um, and you moved the community, uh, you moved the residential unit to block that wall off. Is that, uh, is that specific reason? Just curious about, because visually it was connected before.
Yes, that's a great, great, um, observation. You had, uh, that revision of relocating the community room was again, uh, part of an earlier cost savings measure. Having, not to get too in the weeds, but having units stacked upon a larger gathering space in that smaller building was very challenging structurally. And so we were able to save structural costs by moving into the larger building. Um, but there still be visual connections in between each of those buildings.
Thank you. That's it.
Thanks.
Thank you. Um, and good to see you in person. I'm the last standing, uh, commissioner from when we approved this project back in, uh, fall of twenty-one, and we were all on Zoom then, so it was a bit was personal, I think. Uh, the, uh, one question I had was actually, uh, we discussed back in twenty twenty-one about there was, about the solar shading impact. Uh, can, can I assume that it's the same as it was back when we approved it in twenty twenty-one?
Correct. There's been no major changes that would have impacted the solar study.
Okay. Uh, it didn't look like there was from what we got, but like I didn't see an explicit solar study sheet or anything. So I just wanted to, but and since that was discussed, that was a significant point when back in twenty twenty-one, I wanted to make sure we, it was still the status quo. Okay. Uh, that's the only uh, that's the only question I had. Uh, Commissioner Segura stole a couple of the others I had. But, uh, I'm, but I'm, I do have some comments what, that I'm happy that I'll wanna give at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Uh, Chair Moxius.
Thanks, Vice Chair. Uh, just a couple of questions. Um, first, uh, with the, uh, presentation, it looked like, uh, the elevator shaft was decreasing. And so is the, how's that work? Is the, and there's still an elevator, right?
Correct. There's two elevators in the new building. Uh, previously, in the prior approved entitlements package, we had the elevators going up to the roof to service equipment up there. That was as we progressed the project design, that was no longer deemed necessary. We're providing roof access through a staircase instead. And so we were able to reduce the height of the elevator penthouse.
Got it. Okay, that makes sense. Um, next question. Uh, with respect to going from the, um, single, um, whole unit HVAC to the individuals, what's the impact? Um, is it with respect to, um, like the green impact or energy impact of the building?
Again, a great question. Um, so the, the prior system we had was a VRF system. Don't ask me to explain what that means, but a centralized system with condensers on the roof. It was a very high efficient system, um, but costly in terms of ducting all the piping, um, and airflow down, and then individual fan coil units in each of the, uh, residential units. Um, switching to the package terminal heat pumps, that's pretty, uh, typical on affordable housing. It's just, it prices out more effectively for where we need to be to be, uh, competitive for financing. Um, the package terminal units are still efficient. Um, they've come a long way, uh, in, in the many decades, and they are heavily used in our projects now. Um, it, it probably is not quite as efficient as the system we had before. Um, but it's still going to operate very well.
And for those, um, units, uh, that are within the apartment, does it actually cool or heat the entire apartment? Apartment or is it just, I'm trying to imagine if it's a, if it's a in-wall unit, how does it affect the whole apartment?
Great question. So for our studio units in our one bedrooms, there's one package terminal and it lives in the living room, so it can blow the heat or the cooling into that space. There's a transfer fan to duct it into the bedroom in the one bedrooms. In the two bedrooms and three bedrooms, we have two package terminal units per unit. Um, and again, there's ducting between the bedrooms and the living room spaces.
Okay. And then, um, my other question was if, if the HVAC on the roof is being removed, help me understand, um, again, what, how is the whole project getting a foot taller?
Great question. Um, so we still do have some rooftop equipment on the southern building, building A. That's our, our hot water, um, domestic hot water system lives up there in term, in addition to some storage tanks. So we're still keeping the screening to screen those, those pieces of equipment that still live up there. The building got one foot taller because, uh, well, in reality, it didn't really grow. It's just that as we developed the design further, we needed a little bit more space for all of the floors. And so that pushed the, the documented maximum height up about a foot.
Okay. And then, um, the last, um, and this is, obviously, we're not voting on this. This is, we're just giving feedback. Um, if, if the city were to respond to their request and say, well, unfortunately, you know, we want to stay committed to the original design, what, what would be your plan?
Take that one, Serena.
Um, I think we will have to, I mean, reevaluate, reevaluate like other options to see um, how we can make this project, um, competitive in terms of, um, funding. And I think this, this way, like bringing this project here, I think, um, we don't really wanna reduce any of the units or any, um, initial unit counts that was, um, that was, that what we propose. Um, so this is kind of like a little bit of a give to kind of create the number of units that we can bring to the city.
Okay. And then I have, um, thank you. And I just had two questions, um, for the staff. One was i- if the project were proposed today, uh, basis my, based on my understanding of multiple, um, senate and assembly bills, um, they'd be able to have unlimited, uh, vari- not variances, but, um,
Concessions and waivers.
Concessions and waivers. So then if, if you were proposing it today, if I understand correctly, they would be able to get effectively everything they want. Is that correct?
That's fair.
Um, in, in a way, yes. You know, because there would be unlimited waivers, concessions. So, um, you know, if, if we could make the findings for it.
Can I just make a comment? Um, the unlimited waivers, to the extent that the development standards would conflict, physically conflict with the project as proposed, um, but concessions, there, it's a, there's a limit as to, I'm not sure how many this project had.
Four.
Okay. And did they utilize all of the concessions? Okay, so there's no further concessions with this project.
Okay. And then, uh, my last question for the, uh, city staff is, um, what, just help me and the, um, commissioners understand, what is the threshold, generally speaking, for something to be considered a minor modification that the, the director of, uh, community development approves versus something that would come back to possibly like the planning board, planning commission?
Sorry, I would say typically as long as it maintains the quality of materials and the, uh, same building massing and form. Um, generally, we'd be okay with that at staff level with the director approval. Um, it's when they start changing the, the form and major elements is when we, um, generally kind of bring it back up to planning commission for another, uh, review through them.
And I agree with this one. Definitely, I mean, the, the shape, the overall looks, um, with a quick glance, one might not have been noticed necessarily different. So, okay, uh, understood, appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Not seeing any more hands up. To belabor the point about the P-TAX. I, I'm curious, um, how are they as efficient as other heat pumps? Um, so personally, I'm encountered though, I'm very, very curious about them.
Um, yeah, I, I can follow up with some detailed information. There is a range of efficiencies on them. For this project, we're trying to balance what will serve the units well, um, but also meet our upfront goals of reducing construction cost. Um, the units that are proposed will operate well. Um, they have a long, uh, lifespan, very similar to, to other heat pump options.
And it's just regular one twenty volt wiring for it?
Ooh, you're getting rather technical for my off-the-cuff responses. Um, I, I would have to circle back to answer that.
Uh, I people are always remodeling, right? So, um, I think the larger public would be interested to know that these exist. Um, so, um, or, uh, there are quite a few window units in the city, um, if we had a program to replace them, maybe through Silicon Valley Clean Energy or something. Um, for staff, I guess a question about process. So, so this has come to us as a study session, so we're not actually making any decisions. We would just, you're just really gauging the temperature of the feedback and deciding whether or not it needs to come back before us? Is that a fair characterization?
Um, so we're, we're, um, seeking, um, some feedback. Um, but ultimately, the direction is to work with the applicant, um, on the changes. So if there is any items that are concerning, like maybe for example, the P-TAX, uh, we could revisit with, with the applicant to see if, if there's any options, uh, for modifications, but.
Okay. Um, I personally don't see anything, uh, gives me any trouble. Um, honestly, uh, balconies facing the freeway, um, it seems a little bit like a pink elephant, right? So, um, I, I don't. Um, I guess my biggest concern is, is there anything we can do to make sure this actually breaks ground? Uh, we've been waiting quite a while.
Yeah, no, we, we are working very hard individually to get this project, um, off the ground and, um, we are likely gonna submit for, uh, four percent tax credit in September of this year, and the award will come in fall. Um, so once we know that we win an award, then we can move forward with, um, proceeding, um, towards construction likely next year.
Okay. And is, is that a competitive process? Is it a, uh, you, you check the boxes or, or it's oversubscribed, so they have to rank them? How does that work?
Yeah, so four percent, um, in general, I would say it, it's a comparative, um, process, um, because each project gets ranked, um, based on like, uh, building cost efficiency. It gets based off of, um, how many projects are going in in each, um, region. And it, it gets rated in that sense. Um, yeah, so I, I would say yes. And then all the other funding, like the tax credit is only one piece of it, and there's other funding commitment that needs to happen as well. Um, and there is, um, layers of financing that needs to happen before the start of construction.
Uh, thank you. I know that affordable housing, it's always, um, Byzantine, I think is the word we usually use. Um, and, um, what is the affordability levels for this development?
Um, the affordable, um, the levels are thirty percent to sixty percent AMI.
Oh, wow. Uh, for all the units?
For all the units, correct.
Oh, excellent.
Yeah.
Uh, those are all my questions. Thank you. Uh, one last chance for my fellow commissioners. If you have any questions, you don't see any hands up. Okay, so, um, now I will go ahead and open the public comment on the specific item. Uh, please submit a speaking card to the recording officer. Raise your digital hand now or dial star nine on a telephone to indicate you was to speak. I will call on members of the public participating in person first, followed by remote participants. Uh, speakers will have uh, three minutes to speak. We don't need to change. Um, do we have any speaker cards?
We do not.
Okay. All right, last call for in-person. Um, let's look for a remote. Remote speakers are warned to limit their comments on the agenda item being, to the agenda item being considered. Speakers who are ruled out of order will not be given another chance to speak on the item. The title of this agenda item is, the number is two five dash zero seven zero one. It's about an MPP, uh, for two forty-five Waddell. Uh, reporting officer, do we have any remote participants, participants wishing to speak on this item?
Not at this time.
Okay, I will close public comment. Okay, um, I think Commissioner Pine did indicate that after public comment, you had some comments or?
Yeah, uh, I just, just direct, just in terms of what the staff was, uh, just some general comments. First of all, I'm actually gonna disagree with Commissioner Davis, Vice Chair Davis, but I do actually think the balconies are, are, oh, are substantial loss to this project. I, both in terms of, both in terms of breaking up the architecture and because we had a len- we had a very lengthy discussion at the plant, at, when this came back in planning, and when this was discussed in twenty twenty, I don't know about noise proofing, and I do think we, I do think the previous design did safeguard, that did make the balconies usable for, for like, not just a complete noise, noise sink where it would be unusable. I, and I do think it is just friendly to have a, to have out, to have private outdoor space when you, if, if you're living somewhere, I know. I just, so I, I'm, so I'm, I'm sad, I'm sad to see them removed from the project. I do think it does weaken the, I do, I do think it does non-trivially weaken the project. That being said, uh, I, I understand that there are a lot, I understand that there are a lot of pressures for, for affordable housing. We've just, we've discussed the funding issues. Uh, I ultimately, this is a very beneficial, this, this is a very, I think this is a very important project. I think it provides affordable housing, it provides housing to disabilities. Uh, I think it is something that, it is something that I would very, very much like to see move, move forward. I don't, I'm, I'm not blaming anyone, Chris. I, this is not the fault of anybody in this room tonight, but I'm frustrated, I am honestly frustrated that I approved this towards, I voted for this towards the beginning of my first term, and it is the begin, and tonight marks the beginning of my second term on this commission, and it's, we're, it's, we haven't broken ground, we're still discussing it. I, I wanna see this move forward. And I, and I think the compromise of removing the balconies to still keep this, the amount of space inside each unit the same and to keep the unit count the same, I think, I do think that is a worthy trade-off. And I'm so, and I'd be supportive of this moving forward at, at, at staff level, and frankly, with, without further delay, I don't think, I went through everything that we want, that we thought was important last time, and I don't think this redesign compromised that. I do actually like the, and I do actually very much like the enhancement to the art that we see and that we saw on, on plan eight, you can see it bottom of page, plan eight five. I, I think that's a, that's a, that's nice, it's a nice improvement to the project. I, I'm glad we're still keeping the community garden. I'm, I do think I, I do think it's a little frustrating that how, just how much of a factor cost efficiency plays into this at, just from a funding level, because I do, I do think costs to some extent have that, just, I think architecturally, a lot of times, there are some nice features that might not be the most efficient, but you know, they're nice, they're nice for the residents. But again, that's not the fault of anybody in this room tonight. That's just kind of how things are. Uh, so, and so I'm supportive of this moving forward at staff level. I I don't love all of the changes, but I would rather the project move forward with the changes, move forward expeditiously with the changes and keeping with the same amount of, with, with the same number of units, same number, si- same amount of space, interior space, than, uh, it get further delayed while we try to, you know, optimize some, some design that, okay, maybe I like better, but if it takes three, four more years to build it, it's, that's not a trade-off worth having. Uh, so, and, and I'll just note for the benefit of my fellow commissioners that we received a lot of public comment in support of this project back at the previous planning commission hearing. And there, and I do. And I'm in agreement with a lot of that previous public comment. I'm in agreement with what I said at, at that meeting when, when I seconded the motion to approve it, so please, please try to get this moving forward as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Pine. I will say too that, uh, we did not coordinate our choice of close today. It's just completely coincidental. Uh, Commissioner Shukla.
Thank you, thank you, Vice Chair. So, yeah, I think I'm going to piggyback, I'll piggyback my commissioner fellow that the balcony, yes, I understand that it will save, uh, tons of money. But I was wondering, as, uh, seeing the drawings of this architecture forum, and I know fora. So I think, is there a way that like you can push to have inaccessible balcony, so uh, it can have like some kind of, I know it may not fit in the aesthetics, but something that they can have a little bit more access, a tiny space. So they can put plants or something, because I would say that some of the small units, um, even just little bit of, um, a little bit of feeling that there is a balcony, even though you don't go out, but you can access it to put something. So I just was wondering that if, if it's possible to explore that element and pop it up there without the additional extra cost, it'll be great. But I just leave it up to you. But I think otherwise, um, you guys have done a great job of not compromising the aesthetics of buildings and saving lots of tons of money. So I would have no problem. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner. Um, I don't have much to add. Uh, I think I said earlier, I'd love to see this move forward as quickly as possible. Um, if there's anything that the planning commission can do to expedite it. Well, I don't want to speak for everybody else, but individually, I would I would love if an agenda item could make these things go faster. I'm more than happy to see that on the agenda. It's good business. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn. The meeting is adjourned at six forty-seven PM. Now officially adjourned, the regular planning commission meeting will start in thirteen minutes at seven PM. Thank you.
Thank you.
We are.
Good evening. Let's call to order the planning commission meeting of July fourteenth at seven PM. The city does not tolerate disruptive behavior in our meetings. Sunnyvale prides itself on the rich diversity of our residents. We are committed to create a culture of belonging where members of our diverse community feel included, safe, and respected. This planning commission meeting is considered a limited public forum, which means the commission can regulate the time, place, and manner of speech. Speaker comments must be limited to the agenda item being considered by the commission for consent calendar or public hearing items. Speaker comments during oral communications must be limited to matters within the commission's authority, generally referred to as within the commission's subject matter jurisdiction. If a speaker's comments are not related to an agenda item, the presiding officer will rule the speaker out of order. A speaker will not be ruled out of order because of a disagreement with the content of their speech. Location and online meeting details are available on the planning commission agenda. Scan the on-screen code or click the language access and translation link on the meeting agenda to read and listen along in more than fifty different languages. Use the show captions button to view captions on Zoom. Comments on matters not on the agenda must be submitted prior to the time I call the item for oral communications. Comments on agenda items must be submitted prior to the time I close the public hearing on the agenda item. Speakers are requested to keep their comments to the time period set for public comments for the agenda item, which will be strictly enforced. Guidelines are posted on the city's website and on the planning commission meeting agenda. Please join me in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the public, which stands one nation, indivisible, liberty, and peace.
Recording officer, please conduct roll call.
Vice Chair Davis.
Present.
Commissioner Segura.
Present.
Chair Iglesias.
Present.
Commissioner Fragoni.
Present.
Commissioner Pine.
Present.
Commissioner Shukla.
Present.
We have six commissioners present and Commissioner Seroni's absence is excused.
Thank you. All right, we are now to oral communications. Before we open it to the public, we have an announcement. It's the chair and board commission meeting announcement. The board and commission recruitment is underway for the following openings. The bicycle and pedestrian advisory commission applications are due by four PM this Thursday, July seventeenth, in order to be scheduled for an interview with council on Monday, August fourth. General eligibility requirements include Sunnyvale residency. For more information, please visit sunnyvale.ca.gov and search boards and commissions or call the office of the city clerk at four zero eight seven three zero seven four eight three. Again, that's four zero eight seven three zero seven four eight three to request an application. Applications to serve on a board or commission are accepted on a continuous basis, and applications received after the deadline will be considered for future openings. All right, which brings us to oral communications. This is the public's opportunity to address the commission on topics not listed on tonight's agenda. This section is limited to fifteen minutes and may be extended or continued after the public hearings general business section of the meeting. Individuals may only speak once during oral communications. This planning commission meeting is limited to a is a limited public forum, and the commission can regulate the time, place, and manner of speech. Speaker comments during oral communications must be limited to matters within the commission's authority, again, which is the commission's subject matter jurisdiction. If a speaker's comments are outside the commission's subject matter jurisdiction, the presiding officer will rule the speaker out of order. This allows the commission to conduct its business in a reasonably efficient manner and protects the rights of other speakers. A speaker will not be ruled out of order because of a disagreement with the content of their speech. Please submit a speaker card to the recording officer or raise your digital hand now or dial star nine on a telephone to indicate that you wish to speak. I will call on members of the public participating in person first, followed by remote participants. And participants will speakers will have three minutes to speak. Given that there's nobody present, we will move to online and remote speakers. Because of the nature of remote communications, speakers who are ruled out of order will not be given another chance to speak on this item. Therefore, speakers are warned to limit their comments to subjects that fall within the commission's authorities to take action. Recording officer, do you have any remote participants wishing to speak on oral communications?
We do not, Chair.
Thank you. I will go ahead and close oral communications, which brings us to the consent calendar. I will go ahead and open the public comment on the consent calendar items. Please submit a speaker card to the recording officer, raise your digital hand now or dial star nine on a telephone to indicate that you wish to speak. I will call members of the public participating in person first, followed by remote participants. And speakers will have three minutes to speak. Given that we have no in-person speakers, recording officer, do we have any remote participants wishing to speak on this item?
Not at this time.
Thank you. I will go ahead and close public comment, and I'll ask for a motion for my colleagues. Commissioner Pine.
Thank you. I'm with the consent calendar submitted.
Do. And Commissioner Shukla.
I second it.
Thank you. Before we move to a vote, I just want to point out with the second consent calendar, I believe that it was actually missing your name as present. It has you identified the the notes say that Commissioner Pine was presiding, but it doesn't actually have him listed as present for the meeting. So that's just one adjustment to make to the consent calendar. Given that, I think that's all amenable. Recording officer, please conduct a vote.
The motion passes with five yeses, Vice Chair Davis abstaining, and Commissioner Seroni absent.
Great, thank you. That brings us to general business. We have three items for general business tonight. The first item is twenty-five dash zero seven five five, which is selection of the chair. For this process, is there historically how we've handled this is we've allowed open discussion amongst the commission. If there are folks that are interested in the position, they're welcome to kind of advocate for their case. So I will go ahead and give space for the planning commissioners to to advocate. I still think that we will procedurally will have to still open it for public comment. So but this just first amongst commissioners. So but this just first amongst commissioners, there's space for you. So would anyone like the job? Commissioner Segura.
I think you're doing a great job. We'd like to nominate you for next round. I'm relatively new, so a little bit more time and maybe I'll take a position, but right now I think you guys are doing a great job, so I'm supportive of you guys continuing as long as you guys want it.
All right. Thank you for the vote of confidence, Commissioner Segura. Commissioner Shukla.
Yeah, I can be vice chair if 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 the seat is vacant and everybody agrees on it.
Okay, thank you. Any other Vice Chair Davis, would you be interested in chair?
Looking at my schedule next year. And you've done such a fine job. It's 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 one of those things that if if there's no one else, I'm willing to do it, but I yeah, it's going to be a very busy year for me.
Noted. I'm well, I'm happy to continue learning and just for clarity, and I think it's worth calling out that Commissioner Pine, who had done it for two periods, set a very high bar because he's quite good at it. He was very so I but I also know that Commissioner Pine has done a fantastic job as a commissioner in general.
Thank you.
All right, so then I will go ahead and see and Commissioner Shukla, are you do you have another comment or I see your hand up? Okay. So at this point.
Chair Iglesias, if I may, Commissioner Serroni also noted that he would be interested in the vice chair position.
Okay, so as I understand it, then we have Commissioner Shukla and Commissioner Serroni and Vice Chair Davis. Are you interested in the in the vice chair position?
Oh, well, I took it last time because no one raised their hand. Seeing as we have two people interested and knowing that I'm going to have to travel for business this year, I would yeah, either because Commissioner Shukla or Serroni would would probably be better suited this year, so I'm happy to stand aside.
All right, and thank you, planning officer, for sharing that point. Okay, so at this.
Point of order.
Please.
I just on a point of order, the selection of vice chair is agenda item four, and we are on agenda item three.
That's a very good point. Thank you. All right, so at this point, I will open up the public forum. This is again specifically about item two five dash zero seven five five, which is selection of the chair. I will call on members of the public participating in person first, seeing there are none. I will open this to to remote speakers. Remote speakers are reminded to, we are only discussing the item of selection of chair. Recording officer, do we have any remote speakers wishing to speak?
We do not, Chair.
All right, thank you. I will go ahead and close public forum. And now I will seek a motion from my colleagues. Commissioner Pine.
Steph, correct me if I'm wrong, but the appropriate, would it be appropriate to make a motion or would it be appropriate to make a nomination?
I I think you could make a motion to nominate, and that's.
Okay, I would like to move to to renominate Chair Iglesias's chair for the next term of planning commission.
Thank you. Vice Chair Davis.
I second the motion.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no other hands, recording officer, please conduct a vote.
The motion passes with six yeses and Commissioner Serroni absent.
Thank you. All right. And then don't feel like I need to ask you for what the fate of this is because it's sealed. I'll move on to the next business item, which is two five dash zero seven five six, selection of the vice chair. First, I will open it up just to the planning commissioners for discussion. And Vice Chair Davis.
As I said before, seeing as there are two people who've expressed interest, I'm happy to stand aside considering just the travel requirements I'm going to have in the next year. I think that's just smoother for the planning commission. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Vice Chair Davis. And I know Commissioner Shukla, you've communicated your interests and playing officer, you've communicated Commissioner Serroni's interests. Any other commissioners? Commissioner Shukla, please.
Oh, I I think Mr. Davis is doing a great job, but I thought it would be great to learn the procedures a little better, so that's why I extended my position to be a vice chair. So that was my interest, but if somebody has a very keen interest, then I would let them have it. So that's just I'm stating that fact. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Shukla. All right, at this point, seeing no other commissioner hands, I will go ahead and open the public comment as a reminder to those who are remotely paying attention. We are discussing the selection of the vice chair, so the comment has to be limited to that. Recording officer, do we have any remote participant or remote participants wishing to speak?
We do not.
All right, I will go ahead and close public comment, and I will now leave it up to the commissioners to discuss and or provide a motion to nominate. Vice Chair Davis.
Quick question for staff. I do recall seeing an email from Commissioner Serroni. Do you recall his exact words? Was it along the lines of nobody else signs up, I'll do it, or was it a more or was it a more affirmative?
Basically, he said this meeting if if my name is suggested as vice chair, I would accept, but I also be quite happy if someone else wants to do it. So we can leave it at that.
Okay, all right, so I I'm ready to, I guess, make a motion to nominate Commissioner Shukla as vice chair then.
Thank you, Vice Chair Davis, and Commissioner Pine.
Second.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no other hands, our recording officer, please conduct a vote.
A motion passes with six yeses and Commissioner Serroni absent.
Thank you. Congratulations, Commissioner Shukla, and thank you, Vice Chair Davis. All right, this brings us to our final item of the evening, which is the selection of seats. Item two five dash zero seven five seven. Question for the staff is what what procedure in the past we've had something presented on the board? How would you like to proceed with the selection of the seats?
We're about to pull up that spreadsheet. One moment.
All right, thank you.
So I was looking at the minutes from last year, and it looks like we gave preference to commissioners who had a preference for seats, and then we worked in order of seniority after that.
Thank you. And just to call out that this is sort of reversed in the sense that Commissioner Fregoni for seat, so we're saying seat seven, just for clarity, is there and seat one is Commissioner Segura, just for clarity.
That's correct.
So then should we go by seat? Well, so I think that the chair and the chair position would stay the same, and then for vice chair would be really to Commissioner Shukla regarding which position, either the the number three or the number five seat. Does any planning commissioner, Commissioner Pine?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Were you planning on taking public comment on this before or after we pointed at seats because we do end up having to do a motion to approve them at the end, so it would technically be in order at either point, but.
I think that it makes more sense to discuss what our intention is first and then give space for public comment and then conduct.
Okay. Just because I know when I was chairing, I definitely forgot the public hearing on this one.
Noted and appreciated. Vice Chair Davis.
It seems simplest if just Commissioner Shukla and I trade. Yeah.
Commissioner Shukla, would that be amenable to you? Okay, and just to be clear to Commissioner Pine's point, this is something that ultimately we would open up for public comment as well before making official. Any other comment? Is every otherwise, are all the commissioners satisfied with where their seats are with as it stands right now that what we'd be proposing would be that Vice Chair Davis and inbound Vice Chair Shukla would switch seats? Okay. Commissioner Pine.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I know historically we've done this, we've done this by just calling people's names in reverse order of seniority after the chair and vice chair. However, given that reverse order of seniority is unlikely to change in the next couple of years unless people don't get reappointed or decline to be don't seek reappointment, I don't think there's a problem with streamlining the process.
Yeah, I was gonna say, if if by please, for commissioners right now, if anyone, if you want to change your seat or you want to discuss it further before we go to public comment, please raise your hand. I think that this is probably a general consent amongst the planning commission. But if I'm misinterpreting, please raise your hand. All right, seeing no commissioner hands at this point, I will open public comment. For those of you that are remote participants, we are seeking input on item two five dash zero seven five seven, which is selection of our seats. You're limited to three minutes and only this discussion. Recording officer, are there any remote participants wishing to speak on this item?
Not at this time, Chair.
Shocking. Okay, thank you. And then so at this point, I will seek a motion or discussion from my colleagues. Commissioner Pine.
Yeah, I move that we approve the seats that are on the screen.
And thank you. And Vice Chair Davis.
I second the motion.
All right, thank you. Seeing no other hands, recording officer, please conduct a vote.
The motion passes with six yeses and Commissioner Serroni absent.
Thank you. All right. At this point, that moves us to non agenda items and comments. Are there any commissioner comments? All right, seeing no hands, we'll move to staff comments. Playing officer, do you have any comments?
No comments from staff.
All right, thank you. Then that brings us to, please, Commissioner Shukla.
I mean, when does that start?
It'll start the the next.
It starts immediately. I mean, you just gave me the shock. Okay, because I I just wanted to learn the procedures, so I don't read the books, but anyway, I have to ask both of you. You have a chair and vice chair to give some advice for the next session. Thank you.
You will not be left alone. Commissioner Pine.
Yeah, I would just note that I got nominated and elected vice chair the evening of my very first planning commission. I think I did okay, so you'll be fine.
That's cruel. All right.
Commissioner Simons believed in believing in letting in letting people sink or swim, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Pine. And all right, well, with that, thanks everyone for participating tonight. Congratulations, Commissioner Shukla. Vice Chair Davis, thank you very much, and I'm happy to adjourn this meeting at seven twenty P M.